meeting at Waterbury Arts Magnet School. I'd like to turn the mic over to Commissioner Adorno for Memorial.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to honor and remembrance my friend and teacher, Wanda Tirado, who passed away suddenly last week. I had the pleasure of working alongside her at Wallace and at Wilson, and I just ask that you keep her two daughters and your thoughts and your prayers. Thank you.
Commissioner Hernandez, another moment of silence.
Good evening. In our moment of silence this evening, let us remember Mr. Michael Lawrence, Sr., who passed away on June 24th. He was a longtime history teacher at Crosby High School, and he retired in 1985. And so, we'd like to recognize the service and dedication to the students of Waterbury this evening.
Commissioner Hernandez, would you lead us in pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Ward?
Here.
Vice President Harden? Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Senator Adorno?
Here.
Commissioner Stango?
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Here.
Commissioner Jason Van Stone?
Present.
Commissioner Tom Van Stone?
Present.
President Brown?
Present.
Thank you. We have a quorum this evening. Could I have a motion for number four, please? Communications.
Motion to receive and place on file. Communications is listed.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. We are changing, with the permission of the board, we're changing the agenda a little bit, and we'd like to go to number seven, I mean, number six first. Can I have a motion to go to the public speaking portion?
Motion to suspend the regular order of business to hear from the public, item number six.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. We have one member of the public here to speak this evening, Danielle Albert. Good evening, Danielle.
We are in a pivotal time in the school district, and I believe this time of transition has been a long time in coming. Regardless of my personal preference for our next superintendent, I feel that Russian associates brought us two very solid, strong potential school leaders. Over time, many of us have watched the school district simply put Band-Aids on situations that were in need of a much larger overhaul. But I think tonight is a start, a step forward in creating new leadership, new relationships, and from it, hopefully, some new beginnings and solutions. The blueprint for change is long gone, and it's time to get down to business and focus on what Commissioner Theriot had been consistently calling attention to, academic achievement. Getting our children to a place where they not only achieve, but giving them the confidence that they can, with new leadership that will help them find the confidence in themselves. Our children are capable of and deserving of so much more than we think, than some think the children of Waterbury are worth. That includes what Dr. Henry started in his support of the Palace Theatre Event. That was just a fraction of what our children are capable of. We want our children to achieve academic success, but how can they if their learning is constantly being disrupted? There have been so many disruptions that I've witnessed over the years that I've been coming here. We have seen these disruptions take many forms, and it's time to shut them down and move forward. Disruptions like children who aren't in a learning environment best suited to their needs. Under new leadership, it's my expectation that this will be addressed with a plan and appropriate follow-through. Disruptions exist in the form of bullying, in many ways that can't be labeled or defined, student to student, even teacher to student. It's not conducive for academic success or emotional well-being. Disruptions in the form of outdated and inconsistent curriculum. I viewed the new science curriculum, of which so many of us have high hopes for, but why so long? What learning opportunities have our children missed out on in the interim? And how are we going to go about implementing it without a director of teaching and learning? Hopefully by not overextending our supervisors, causing another disruption. Disruptions have come in the form of staff turnover and piecemeal leadership. The city must retain dedicated teachers like I've encountered, teachers like Nicola Bonacore and Regina Gorman, musical talent like Kathy Dwyer, parent liaisons like Anne Marie Brights and Central Office District leaders like Dr. Baker, individuals who will support and mirror our children and their intended successes in all color, shapes, and sizes. Leadership stabilization needs to take place. Support needs to be given to programs and leaders that will counteract these disruptions and deliver results. Disruptions have also come in the form of parent engagement. Children will do better if their parents are engaged, and actions speak so much louder than words, and we have a lot of words like DPAC, FACE, PTO, PTA, parent engagement. Under this new leadership, it's time to see some action once and for all. Earlier in the year, it was stated that every school is to have a PTO or a PTA. It's a wonderful idea. We even saw the PowerPoint at Kingsbury a few weeks ago. However, how is it possible when there are no rules or procedures or oversight for finances of these groups? The mismanagement of fundraising and finances can potentially cause a huge disruption in the city. It's a wonderful idea, like I said, but another example of how you can't just check the boxes and say, "Well, we have this" without proper protocol in place. Earlier today, I had a DPAC meeting. With support and no more distractions, DPAC and a solid face center could finally turn family engagement around. Efforts need to be maximized, and that includes proper planning, clear goals of every parent group, advanced notifications, and total transparency. Dialing into the methods of contact so that parents are aware and engaged of all facets of true community building. Our children will succeed. New leadership needs to look at how the turnaround plan didn't really turn much around here. However, success can happen. Here in Waterbury, we've seen it in small increments, but it's time to change the game. I have hope, and I have expectations for what this district should be delivering to my children. New leadership will encounter a lot of to-dos, but it needs to be ensured that, or it needs to ensure that the right people are in place, who will let our teachers teach and let our learners learn, without any more distractions. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other members of the public who wish to speak? Please state your name and address, sir.
My name is Anthony Borges. I live at 345 Cross Road. I'm here to address an issue about my son. The principal has clearly violated parental rights. He's had had three private meetings with my son to ask him about a matter, then he also had three meetings with police officers, also with my son. In these six meetings, the principal has decided to not contact the parents. I asked the principal, "Why was this?" He said he had the right to act as my child's parent. The principal had no written consent, right, and he proceeded to talk to my child when I asked him specifically, "Do not talk to my child without a parent or guardian being present." Now, I know my rights as a parent. I tried to talk to the principal. He clearly violates my rights as my parent. He talked to my child. I asked him not to. He did it again. So, we as parents now, my child has had his phone taken because the principal has allowed a police officer to talk to my child, and then when I asked the cop, "Well, if you're a cop, weren't you also supposed to contact the parent?" And he said, "Oh, the principal said I could talk to him." So, the principal gave the police officer consent to talk to my child. I have no issues with no one, but I clearly, clearly something has to be done about this principal stepping his bounds. There has to be some type of reprimand or something. I'm clearly not gonna be one of them parents to let staff members do what they think they want to do, or think they can be a parent to my child. My child has two parents. My child goes to school for academic level. He doesn't go to school for morals and values. That's where he gets at home. This principal has decided to overstep his bounds, and I clearly just, there has to be some type of reprimand to this principal. My son goes to, my son goes to Korea. He's a junior. He plays football. He does what he's supposed to, and yet, and still, because of a matter that's going on, a principal has overstepped his bounds. And this is the head principal, not an assistant principal. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Definitely look into it. Okay. Could I have a motion to return to the regular order of business?
So moved.
Second. Let's do a second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Next on the agenda is our deputy superintendent's announcements.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, not all at once. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you. I just like to begin the report by reminding us that our last day of school was June 21st. It just happened to have been a momentous occasion in many ways, in that we had a number of graduations and promotional ceremonies that took place, and that's always a very exciting time of the year, as we look at our students taking one step further, yes, towards graduation, and yes, towards adulthood, so to speak. But to see the students and their families enjoying that moment in the sun, and in many instances, in the sun, literally, was to behold, and I think a successful experience for those that participated in it. Second, I'd like to simply inform the public at large that we do have a number of summer school programs, including enrichment programs, that are available to our students, and they're too numerous at this point to actually give you the listing. So, I'm suggesting that you please visit our website in terms of, yes, the dates of those programs, the times of their meeting, the locations, recognizing, again, that the plethora is extensive enough that we know your child will be well-served if they're up to attend. It's never too early to remind you when school will reopen again, come August. So, our first day of school is scheduled to be August 27th, and we will have our back-to-school rally, which is apparently an activity we have come accustomed to, on August 22nd, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. at Library Park. Finally, with the anticipated appointment this evening, I have a permanent superintendent for Waterbury Public Schools. This becomes my final engagement with you in this process as the interim superintendent. Shortly thereafter, anticipate we'll be going through a transitional process, and so, I simply want to say, there's been a tremendous pleasure for me to service the Waterbury community, our students in particular. It's been extremely enjoyable, yes, rewarding. I've found staff to be very welcoming, professional, dedicated to the students under their care. As I came in, we talked about three goals. One was about establishing stability for the district, ensuring continuity in terms of our instructional academic agenda, and ensuring that we also were able to obtain accountability throughout the whole system. I believe that with the leadership provided, we were able to achieve all of those, to the degree that I feel comfortable providing the transition to the new superintendent.
I'll ask it for you.
My five minutes are up. I mean, can't even wait for me to walk out. I mean, time is up. Okay. But parting words have to do with the fact that I wish the incoming superintendent nothing but the best, together with the entire district. There's a lot to be proud of in the district, and I'm hoping to watch the next chapter develop. Thank you again to the board and to the community at large.
Thank you very much. My comments will be brief, and I think I can speak on behalf of the board, that you have been an outstanding interim deputy superintendent, and we know that you will stay with us during the transition, and I think you have brought a level of professionalism and have seen the best in the Waterbury school system, and you've identified that, and I think we're in a good position to move forward. So, I think we all appreciate. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. I just want to officially announce, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Van Stone.
Thank you, Madam President.
Welcome.
Mr. Henry, we certainly got off to a rocky start. Sailing has been very smooth since, and I thought it was smooth until you had a throw-up Germany, early exit from the World Cup, as soon as you walked through the door. But what I will say is soccer became our bond.
Yes, sir.
The district owes you a lot. You and I have not only become colleagues, I think we've become friends.
Yes.
So, I thank you. You will be on my speed dial for a very long time.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Pleasure. Thank you.
Commissioner Ward?
In that we will move in a different direction very shortly, I would like also to thank you for providing a calm and quiet leadership that the district was in sore need of, and I think you've done a lot in a very short time to restore the morale in each building, as well as give us some hope for the future here on this board. So, I'd like to join in wishing you the best and hoping you don't go too far.
You are. Thank you so much.
Amen. It has been with regret that we have received the resignation of Commissioner John Theriot, who due to personal and health reasons, has resigned from the Board of Education, and on behalf of the Board of Education, we are going to be giving him this certificate of appreciation for his service, honoring your service, dedication, and commitment to the students of Waterbury as a Commissioner of the Waterbury Board of Education, December 1st, 2015 through June 20th, 2018. And this, of course, in addition to his many years as a teacher and principal in the school district. We wish him better health and good luck in all his future endeavors. Thank you. Okay, next, Commissioner Stango.
Thank you. Madam President, I would say this, if John was sitting right here now, so I want to say it anyway. I would like to thank him for over his 10 years of service on the Board of Education, working for the children and families of Waterbury. John is a good man, and I wish him good health and happiness in his retirement, and I wish him good luck. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Great. Thank you. And I just want to note that Commissioner Karen Harvey is not with us tonight due to illness, and this is her first absence in 10 years of service. So, she really is not happy she's not here. So, Karen, you're with us in spirit, but she's very disappointed she's not here. So, anyway, Commissioner Sweeney.
Item 9.1, ma'am?
Item number nine.
Item 9.1. Ladies and gentlemen, the Personnel Search Committee recommends approval of the election of Dr. Vernon D. Verna, I'm sorry, Verna D. Ruffin as Superintendent of Schools, subject to execution of an employment contract.
Second.
Discussion. Commissioner Awad?
I would first like to just say that it was quite a process we all undertook. I think this board made the right decision first in bringing on the search firm that we chose. I think the process was well thought out, and we did a lot of work the last few weeks to land on the selection today. Regarding Dr. Ruffin, I am very pleased that you'll be joining us. I wish you, ma'am, the courage that you have displayed in your other districts, and I, you cannot imagine the amount of success that we all wish for you to have here in the district. So, we're looking forward to you coming onboard and making some significant differences for our community. Thank you.
Commissioner Hernandez?
I too would have to agree with Commissioner Awad. The process was right on. The two candidates that came before us all as finalists were both exceptionally well candidates. I too agree that Dr. Ruffin, I think, will hopefully come forth and bring Waterbury into a better place. I think everyone will, on this board at least, is willing to help you. We're open to you coming to us and discussing whatever it is that you feel will help the children of Waterbury move forward in a positive direction, and I too would like to welcome you aboard.
Commissioner Van Stone?
Charles.
Oh, Commissioner Stango.
Thank you again. Regarding Dr. Ruffin, one of the things that I took from our discussions with Dr. Ruffin was her sense of excitement when talking about what she would do when she comes to Waterbury. Actually, it was her excitement, not for what she would do, it was her excitement for what we could do. I found her discussions were not all about the "she." They were, in fact, about the "we." In Dr. Ruffin's discussion about Waterbury, I was impressed with the quickness of her mind. On more than one occasion, as she was driving a point home, on a resolution for a particularly perplexing problem that we posed, she would suddenly interject with one or two other strategies or initiatives to help solve the issue at hand. As she was speaking, on one initiative, another one popped into her head. It was constantly coming forward. Dr. Ruffin possesses a unique energy of mind, an energy which can only serve her and us well in our district. In her excitement and enthusiasm, I sense she can't wait to start here. I think she actually said that. However, in reality, it is I who can't wait for her to start here. I do believe that Dr. Ruffin is truly a worthy successor to the office of superintendent held by many of our previous superintendents. Therefore, it is without reservation that I will be voting yes on her election to be our superintendent tonight. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner Stango. Let me go to, okay, Commissioner Hernandez?
This is from Vice President Karen Harvey. "I give my support for Dr. Verna Ruffin for the new superintendent of schools in the city of Waterbury. I feel that she is highly qualified and very innovative with her thoughts, particularly curriculum and cultural competency. I believe she would be a good fit for Waterbury Public Schools. Best regards, Karen E. Harvey, Vice President."
Thank you. Now, Commissioner Jason Van Stone?
Thank you, Madam President, through you. At your and the mayor's request, the elder Commissioner Van Stone and I took a junket for the last couple of days, and we went down and visited Tennessee to kind of kick the tires on Dr. Ruffin. In that very short window, we interviewed 17 people who had prior relationships with Dr. Ruffin. Those included central office people, teachers, state education leaders, Board of Ed members, business leaders, community leaders, as well as their leaders in higher education. Of those 17 people, 16 used the word collaborative in describing how Dr. Ruffin does her business. She, central office leader, said, "She's the boss, but she's not scared to trust her deputies to be creative and to lead their respective groups. She's there to oversee. She's there to determine the results, but she's not scared to let people have ideas," which I thought was a telling thing. The teachers we spoke to loved her. They said, "We knew what was expected of us," which is something we often hear that doesn't necessarily always happen. They knew what they were supposed to do. They knew what good teaching looked like. Two of them had said lines similar to, "We know that we need to be the best teacher we can be," and that that is their charge. She made promises, and she kept them. That was another theme that both teachers, central office, and the Board of Ed noted, that she doesn't say things she doesn't believe she can follow through on, and if she makes you a promise, it will be kept. And she believes in the teachers. That was the, a number of teachers said that, that at the end of the day, they knew that their superintendent believed in them in their profession. State education leaders, Dr. Ruffin stood out with an intense focus on academics and building out the curriculum and having a plan. That's something we talk about here a lot, and that struck me. In addition to that, in addition to having a plan, she had a follow-up, and she had metrics to gauge that success, another thing we're often looking for here. The Board of Ed, two members we spoke to said that her caring and compassion for all kids is what always stood out to us, and that idea of teaching to every kid in the district was another theme that was brought up over and over. Every student who walks through the doors deserves the education that they should be promised, and Dr. Ruffin believes that. The Board of Ed was very open and honest, saying she navigated some very difficult issues down in Jackson, Madison. She did with grace and effectiveness. They say that Jackson, Madison is now much better than when she found it, and they believe that in 10 years, it'll even be better, simply because Dr. Ruffin and the vision that she had, which she articulated well and had a plan to achieve. The business leaders in town couldn't say enough. Talked about the partnership she built, how she would go out in the community and understand what that region needed from its new young workforce, that she preached career readiness, and with a pretty big employer in town, Toyota, if I recall, a lot of these kids are coming out without hundreds of thousand dollars of debt, but walking into $75,000 a year jobs. So, she understood the paradigm had to change, and that not necessarily the future for every one of these kids was going to be a four- or two-year school, and she made sure that they had career readiness alignments, that these kids could walk right into jobs. The community loved her. She would go anywhere, they said. People didn't need to come to her, whether it be a church, a project, a community meeting, she was there. "She has no off button," was a quote. "She goes where the people are who need to be heard." Dr. Larry Bailey from Jackson State Community College, right? He couldn't stop talking about the program. He watched Dr. Ruffin build at his school, and the linkage that she fostered between the community college system and Jackson, Madison, kind of to the point, we had to cut him off at one point because he began filibustering. He would not stop talking how proud he was of the program you guys put together, and he reeled off the stats of how these kids are succeeding and heading towards the ability to leave high school with the associate's degree already, or at least pretty far down that road. He was very excited about that. We heard about her special ed background and how she made sure that the kids who needed special ed interventions got special ed interventions got them, got the appropriate ones, but also understood it wasn't necessarily a life sentence. If you're diagnosed with, you know, as a sped kid in the third grade, doesn't mean you have to be there for the rest of your education career. And she did everything she could to make sure that every one of those kids were identified correctly, got the services they need, and made sure that, again, getting back to that teaching all kids, that was another theme. One of the things one of the Board of Ed members said as we were wrapping up, and I thought it was, was a tremendous point and kind of gave me an idea of who Dr. Ruffin was, he said, "Dr. Ruffin can connect dots that nobody else sees." We don't need that here. I'm not too sure what we need. So it was, I left Tennessee with some great barbecue and a hundred percent confidence that Dr. Ruffin is the person who needs to be our next superintendent here in Waterbury, and she can't get my recommendation any higher. Anything else?
Thank you. Commissioner O'Dorno.
Thank you, Madam President. I have to really piggyback for, for this interview process to be my very first. It was very interesting. It was hard work, to say the least, but overall, it was interesting how we all collectively, you know, selected two really great candidates and, and Dr. Ruffin. Welcome. I'm really looking forward to moving this district in a positive direction. Our city is in need of change, and I'm hoping that this change is something that all our stakeholders will be content with, and also looking forward to collaboratively work with you and on the board to continue to provide the opportunities for all students to maximize their, their skills and their talents. You seem to be a very strong and passionate and qualified individual, and again, I'm looking forward to you working really alongside you, along with our, our board, and hopefully bring the, the change that our city desperately needs, and I wish you the best. I also would support the board's decision in appointing you for the new superintendent to our district, so I just want to welcome you. Bienvenido.
Commissioner Van Stone.
I was just going to say ditto.
Is the, is the real Commissioner Van Stone?
It's a new hair in Waterbury Public Schools.
What happened in Tennessee? Commissioner Sweeney.
Dr. Ruffin, I was extremely impressed by the amount of diligent research you did into this district when you came forward for this position. And in the time that you were physically here in Waterbury, how much time and attention you spent to the city of Waterbury and the things that you were able to relate to us that I grew up with, but became fresh in your eyes, seeing for the first time. And I was extremely impressed at the public forum with the quick and strong connection that you made with this, this community here. I found that absolutely amazing. So, I can't comprehend that with all of those great qualities, that you would not be the person to take this district to the next level. So it will be my honor to cast my vote for your superintendency tonight, so thank you.
Thank you. I have a statement to read from our Honorable Mayor Neil O'Leary. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Scott Morgan and Dr. Michael Rush and all staff members involved for the outstanding job performed during the civil service process for finding our next school superintendent. Having participated as a commissioner in the last superintendent's search process in 2011, I am grateful to everyone involved, especially members of the Board of Education, who diligently supported Mr. Morgan and Dr. Rush during the long but deliberative process. I am also grateful to the Civil Service Commission for initiating the criteria that was put in place demanding that each candidate have successful urban experiences prior to their applications being accepted. Having been a participant in the board's interview process, I commend each commissioner for their due diligence and professionalism displayed towards each of the top five candidates. It was a difficult process, as each of the candidates were wonderful, caring educators who displayed a deep passion for providing every student an opportunity to learn. In the end, I was proud to be part of such a thorough selection process, and I'm thrilled with the selection of Dr. Verna Ruffin to be the next leader of our district. During the interviews, she displayed self-confidence, compassion, and had done incredible research on this district, identifying not only our challenges, but also our successes. Dr. Ruffin has the urban education experience to move, to move this district forward, as she has in her previous leadership roles in both Oklahoma and Tennessee. She has also agreed to live in our great city, which I believe is very, very important as well, sending a strong message of her commitment to our community. I would like to thank Commissioners Jason and Tom Van Stone for traveling to Dr. Ruffin's former districts during the week as part of this thorough process. Lastly, I want to acknowledge and thank Dr. Robert Villanova from the UConn-Niac School of Education. It was Dr. Villanova who introduced me to Mr. Robert Henry, who has done an amazing job leading this district since the retirement of Dr. Kathy Olet. It is my hope that Mr. Henry will stay on as our deputy superintendent during this critical transition process and beyond. Thank you and God bless. Mayor O'Leary. So, you have to stay. I just want to add, add my, my congratulations to Dr. Ruffin, and I look forward to working with you. As you can see, we have a tremendous board, we have, you'll have tremendous support, and I think we're all willing to roll up our sleeves and really do what we need to do. And it's all about our kids, and each person in this board, they really care about the kids, and that's what I know who you care about. I just want to say that, thank Commissioner Sweeney, she actually changed all of her vacation plans, flights and so forth, so she could be with us tonight. That's, that's how dedicated our, our commissioners are, so I really appreciate that, Commissioner Sweeney.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, drum roll, call the vote. Commissioner Awad?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Serrano O'Dorno?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Jason Van Stone?
Clearly.
Commissioner Tom Van Stone?
May I think about it? Yes.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right. Commissioner Hernandez, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you very much. I am, I am never speechless. But I am so humbled and honored to serve as your superintendent, and I am so excited about the opportunity to work with you in this amazing community on behalf of the children and the great people that want to make a difference in Waterbury. I thank you wholeheartedly for your kind words. Did enjoy the visit. I didn't know all of the things the staff told you, and I'm deeply touched by your comments, and I so appreciate your sharing them. I, I look forward to forging great relationships here in Waterbury and the, the amount of work and intense work that we're about to do, but how exciting to know that you have a community and a board that really wants great things on behalf of children. I can't tell you how excited I am. I can't wait to officially move here, and I can't wait to get to work. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Great. Now that we have a celebratory mood, I'd like to invite some friends of mine from the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education to share with us a very exciting initiative that CAPE is implementing, and hopefully Waterbury will be one of our models. So, if you'd like to come to the podium? And if you could introduce yourselves.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Mary Broderick, and this is Don Harris. Don is the Vice President of CAPE and is the Head of the Ad Hoc Committee on Diversity that CAPE instituted in February of 2016, and we're delighted to be here, and we thank you very much for being willing to be a pilot for an equity toolkit that we have been putting together over the last year. I understand that you all got a copy of that electronically, and we've brought hard copies tonight, and this is the pilot phase of this toolkit. We'll be going through it a little bit later, and we hope this is a bit of a working session with you as well. There has been so much in the news of late about the issue of equity, from Charlottesville to Starbucks, and the national rhetoric, the climate at the moment is something that reminds us that we need to keep having the difficult conversations about equity and about race and about tough things for us to talk about. We need to, to understand and examine issues of race and implicit racism so that we can move, remove the barriers to our collective well-being. We recognize that racial anxiety exists in all of us, and we need to understand that that isn't going to go away, but this work is not about feeding that anxiety. This work is about understanding the implicit and explicit barriers that impede our success. Now, we recognize that Waterbury has been doing a lot of work along these lines, that you have been, with grants from the Grousteine Memorial Fund and Nellie Mae as well, and the Courageous Conversations work that you've been doing, that you have been tackling this. And so we're hoping that this toolkit will serve to support your efforts, give you some different lenses with which to tackle this work, and keep it, keep the momentum going, keep the conversations going. With that, let me invite Don to come up and talk just a little bit about the work that we have been embarking on as a committee.
I'd also add that Don Harris is the Chair of the Bloomfield Board of Education, and a former principal, and teacher, and coach, and all kinds of good things, right?
You're taking two minutes of my... Yeah, I, thank you for indulging us tonight. But yes, I spent thirty-nine years as an educator in the Bloomfield system. I started as a physical education teacher, athletic director, high school principal, and I'm now in my seventh year as the Chair of the Board of Education in Bloomfield. Also, in my other life, not only am I the first Vice President of CAPE, but I also was privileged to be appointed by the Governor to sit on the State Board of Ed that I've been sitting on for the past year and a half. Mary has talked a little bit about what we have done as far as creating this pilot, and she's used the word equity a couple times. You're going to hear equity a few times, so let me give you our definition of equity as it, in education. In education, equity is access to resources, opportunities, processes that unleash potential and enhance success and prosperity for each and every child. Equity is not sameness. Repeat that. Equity is not sameness. Equity recognizes and responds to the gifts and needs in each individual in each community. Now, at CAPE, we recognize that we value your partnership as we pilot an equity toolkit designed to help you and this community reflect on policies, practices, and then create a plan to eliminate barriers to equity and encourage a more welcoming culture, which I'm sure you're going to have a lot of with your new superintendent. And let me also offer my congratulations to Dr. Ruffin. I look forward to working with you. Additionally, we recognize at CAPE that there are no quick fixes out here to inequities that exist, but we would like to offer tools to examine your personnel and collective cultural competency and to engage your community in discussing issues of equity and opportunity for all. And I know you would agree with this statement, that no student should ever confront bias, harassment, prejudice, or discrimination in our schools. Effective district leaders establish and sustain safe, enjoyable learning environments, which you are aware of, is becoming increasingly difficult in these days and times. As Mary mentioned, I do chair CAPE's Diversity Committee that began in February 2016, so we're about two years, two years in, in the running. We started it with a thought of, what do our boards of education look like in terms of diversity? And you don't have to go too far or think too long on what most of our boards look like in terms of diversity. So, with that, we created a vision that every Connecticut school board will embrace diversity, commit to equity and fairness to enhance success for each child. And that's talking not only Board of Education, but also administrators and teaching staff. The school board and district staff should reflect the community's diversity. CAPE will help to serve as a catalyst in promoting policies and practices that support diversity and equity. We also feel that school districts need to understand students' socioeconomic and cultural backgrounds. State educational organizations should understand students' socioeconomic and cultural backgrounds, and I'm not overly sure that they do. You understand it, but does the rest of the state? And also additionally, Connecticut must overcome barriers to attracting a diverse teaching force. Out of that, we created a mission. The CAPE's Ad Hoc Committee on Diversity exists to analyze, make recommendations to overcome barriers to a diverse workforce, analyze and make recommendations to overcome barriers to attracting board members of color, inspire other board members to commit to the vision. And I'm going to stop right now, and I'm going to turn it back over to Mary.
Thank you.
So just so that you are aware, the Department of Education has also got a plan about equity, and this toolkit is dovetailed with that plan, so it ought to be consistent. And we have been gathering through these couple of years we've been at this work, a trove of articles and videos and materials that can support you in this work. If they're not in the toolkit, they're on the website, so we want to make that as accessible as possible to, to boards. But we, we thought this toolkit would be important for you to help But we thought this toolkit would be important for you to help you listen to your communities and engage your communities in the discussion about equity and where you stand with equity in Waterbury. There is a wonderful book that is referenced in the toolkit called Excellence Through Equity. And we're not talking about, we're talking about improving the odds of every single child being successful through this work. All right. With that, we have some ground rules for this work and I will post this in a minute and cover it with you. The ground rules are that we, we, thank you. We look within, that change comes from within, that we be honest and explicit, that we aren't afraid to get messy, because this can be messy work, that we recognize that the work isn't linear, but we have to move through and not around the difficult conversations about race, power, and privilege, that we're hopeful, we maintain a belief that we are going to be able to accomplish what we set out to do, that we expect and accept non-closure, that we respect others' perspectives, critically important if we're really going to understand where we are, and that we avoid any bling game. Can everybody agree to those ground rules?
No.
Yeah. Anybody have any that they would want to add? Okay. Are you able to stick this up on the wall? Yeah, I know, that is the question. We do have an exercise and I'm not sure whether you are really, you don't want to do the exercise at this point. Okay.
Yeah, our understanding this was just, you know, explaining what's going on and then we'll have follow-up meetings to delve into it.
That's great. So let me just quick, well, actually, let me go through the toolkit with you so that you are aware of everything that's in it. There's a description of how this work came about, what some of the guiding principles are of it, and the vision and values and belief that Don has really just covered with you. There is our equity definition on page six, what we believe equity is, the importance of each student seeing themselves in their education. There's a description of what cultural competence is and how we acquire it, and reflective questions a board can ask itself to assess where they are with cultural competence and some suggestions for getting started. Possibly especially important for a Board of Education is something that's called an equity lens, so that as you consider policies, if you ask yourselves the questions on the equity lens, you will keep mindful about the importance of thinking about the different constituents who are affected by the policies that you enact. Excellence Through Equity, so I mentioned this book. It's Pedro Noguera and Alan Blankstein. And there's a summary of the book here that I hope makes it pretty accessible. And the importance of personalized learning. How many of you have gotten really familiar with personalized learning at this point? One. Okay. And then some suggested next steps. The next part of this toolkit is a description of what a community conversation is. I know Waterbury has a long, proud tradition of community conversations that different organizations in the community have sponsored. I actually have been right in this building doing community conversations in the past a couple of times. And I know I've seen Charles there. I know they've been really powerful events. So the idea is that with the commitment to this pilot, that Waterbury would, that you as a Board would charge a planning committee, a diverse planning committee, to put together a community conversation to be held in the fall. And that would also include identifying people to be trained as moderators and I'm hoping that the Board members would serve as recorders so that you're really seen as listening to the community through that process. And then the possible questions, all of this is spelled out in this toolkit, the questions that could frame the conversation, that would get at equity issues and personalized learning issues, and draw out of the community where you are. It's a powerful tool to engage people in a non-threatening way and to really get the breadth of wisdom and experience from the community to inform you in all of your actions going forward. There are some sample agendas in there and that kind of gives you the arc of what is in the toolkit at this point. And I know some of, you should have received it electronically, some of you have had a chance to look it over. And at that point, I'm going to invite Don up. Any questions about the toolkit at this point?
I think, what are the other towns that are doing the pilots? I forget.
We've already been working with Bristol. So Bristol is one. Danbury was selected as a pilot, but because they have a Nellie Mae grant to do a lot of different conversations, we're going to work with them where they are, but not really necessarily enrolling this pilot. We're also working with Ansonia and with, fourth community. Bristol, Ansonia.
That's all.
Is that four?
That's four.
I didn't forget.
Okay, thanks. Any questions? Okay, go ahead. Did you want to come up?
I know you have a very heavy agenda. So I just wanted to mention, I am the sub tonight. I am, I chair the Diversity Committee, but retired Superintendent John Ramos is Mary's normal partner with this, so.
Well, thank you for filling in.
Thank you for not giving me a particularly hard time tonight. I appreciate that.
I just want to thank Don for filling in and being here. This has been a very difficult one to schedule and I appreciate your flexibility and our ability to be here this evening. So thank you very much, Don.
Thank you. Any questions? I know I had Commissioner Van Stone, I had mentioned, well, he's going to be taking a leadership role in helping us do this work, so I thanked Tom for doing that and Commissioner Harvey, who's not here, but they've agreed to help move this along for me.
Wonderful. Great.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is the Consent Calendar. Is there anyone who would like anything removed from the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'd like to read the consent calendar. 10.1, Request Approval to Participate in the Healthy Food Certification Program. 10.2, Request Approval of Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with Evergreen Center for Out-of-District Student Placements as Required by Their IEP. 10.3, Request Approval of a College Readiness and Success Contract with College Board for Exams, Products, and Services. 10.4, Request Approval of a Contract with Glen Terrace Landscaping, Inc. to Provide Playground Improvements at Chase, Generali, and Walsh Schools. 10.5, Request Approval of an Agreement with Waterbury Young Men's Christian Association, YMCA, to Provide Student Pre-Vocational Unemployment Training. 10.6, Use of School Facilities by School Organizations and/or City Departments. 10.7, Use of School Facilities by Outside Organizations and/or Waiver Requests. Could I have a motion?
Motion to Approve the Consent Calendar is read.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. Next we have, there was eleven, there were no items removed from the consent calendar. Number 12, Commissioner Hernandez, the Grievance Committee.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Committee on Grievances recommend WTA Grievance 17-18-29, heard by the committee on June 5th, 2018, be denied.
Second.
Discussion. Could we have a brief summary of the grievance?
This was a grievance from a teacher that did the ESY last year and he felt that he should have been the person in charge of the ESL summer program. This year, there was a panel of three directors that did the interviews and they chose another candidate.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. Commissioner Awad.
Thank you. With the approval of the Committee on Finance, the Deputy Superintendent recommends the approval of the submittal of, which one is first?
13.1.
Yeah.
The Perkins.
With the submittal of the Connecticut State Department of Education, 2018-19 Carl D. Perkins Grant, respectfully submitted.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Under discussion. I just wanted to note that when this was at the workshop, there were some questions and we actually held off and the Finance Committee did meet and I'd like to thank those people that attended on a Friday night, because that was the only night we could find, that went through this with us. There were some concerns and I want to thank Louise Brown. She provided an overview of the process that was used to secure the lists from each of the schools. There were explanations for made to some of the expenditures as to what, how they worked within the curriculums. But the other thing that we were all concerned about was maintaining the integrity of the inventory. Some of this stuff is very expensive items that we're ordering, small items that could have the tendency to walk away or disappear. And so Mr. Reed was able to read to us the inventory process and control systems that'll be in place to ensure the integrity. This application is a half a million dollars worth of equipment for our school district and so we thought it was important to take the time and review it. I know you, Madam President, had a few questions. We answered those and I do believe in the end we have an application that will benefit the students in their quest to become viable members of the workforce and improve their education experience in the district. So thank you.
And thank you for taking the time to really delve into it and make sure that we had all the questions. Commissioner Van Stone.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you. Just as a reminder, I do have a request on the table to review all grants, their statement of work, and how we're spending that money. So it's a general comment, not necessarily against Perkins, but something we need to be sure we're doing checks and balances. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Van Stone.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you. I just wanted to echo what Commissioner Awad said and I want to thank Louise, who's probably come before us three or four times, even if we haven't necessarily called her up to ask, she's been here to answer all the questions. I thought, thank her and Mr. Reed did a great job the other day, again on a Friday night and was very illuminating in helping, you know, dig into this, you know, a couple hundred page document with numbers and figures and kind of put some meat on those bones. I just wanted to thank you here, since you're personally, and Mr. Reed if he's watching at home.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. Commissioner Awad, 13.2.
Well, with the committee, ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on Finance, the Deputy Superintendent of Schools recommends the approval of Amendment 1 to the Professional Services Agreement with PTSMA, Select Physical Therapy, respectfully submitted.
Second.
Discussion.
Under discussion, you might recall, we also asked if they could take a look and perhaps at least restore the three trainers instead of the two so that we didn't suffer a reduction in the coverage of our athletic events for the students. And Mr. Gorman was able to work with Dorian Biolo and they were able to come up with the funding to be able to at least keep us level and not lose a trainer. Hopefully in the future, we'll be able to provide a trainer for each of the buildings that have sports programs at the high school level. But again, I think the protection of our athletes is as important, the protection of their bodies is the protection of their minds.
So we're up to three again?
We're back to where we were.
Back to three.
We didn't lose anybody.
Okay. Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. And 13.3 is being removed until we, that's going to be sent to workshop. Oh, could I have a motion to?
A motion to remove it from the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. That's going to be sent to workshop for further discussion. Thank you. Okay, number 14, Superintendent's Notification to the Board.
Motion received and placed on file. Superintendent's Notification to the Board, Items 14.1 through, through 14.19, which might be a new record, ladies and gentlemen.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Item 15, Unfinished Business or Preceding Meeting Only?
Can't remember what it was.
Seeing none. 16, Other Unfinished, New, and Miscellaneous Business. I just had a question in terms of, do we know how many retirements we had this year yet? Or are we still totaling?
Probably still totaling.
Okay. At some point, I think it would be good to see.
By next meeting.
Okay, that'd be great. If I may, Commissioner Awad.
I also was wondering if we could get a recap under resignations as to where folks went, why they went, and how much they went for, so that we can understand what we're up against. And I mean, specifically, I'll just name one. Jeremy Rubach has been a mainstay at Willby High School in the Technology Department. That is a tremendous loss to Willby High School. I wish him the best, but our kids will suffer as a result of him leaving. So I want to know, what do we need to do to remain competitive, to keep these teachers, to keep the level of quality that, I mean, he's with the district a long time. So I'm just wondering, you know, how do we do, administrators, SVPs, where are they going and how do we keep them?
That's a good point. Because we have to track that. Okay, any other comments or suggestions? Commissioner Van Stone.
I just, I would be remiss, there was one other thing I wanted to note from our trip and since Dr. Ruffin's still here, it was probably the most impressive quote, at least to me. One of the teachers who had worked under her, who actually was, found herself in part of that shuffling, which could have been a very trying time, when I asked her, you know, what she'll remember about her time with Dr. Ruffin, she said, "I respected her so much, each day I wanted to become a better teacher." So, nice job. Thank you, Madam President.
Commissioner Van Stone.
Ditto.[1657.46][1657.46][laughter]
Twice. A double dinner.
What happened in Tennessee?
[inaudible][1664.15][1664.15][laughter]
Must have been the barbecue. And that, Commissioner Sweeney.
Just very briefly, on a personal note, as was noted tonight, I was scheduled a few days ago to leave for vacation and I delayed that to be here tonight because it meant something to be, very much, to be here tonight. But the work that we do as members of this Board does not happen without the support of family and friends. So to my daughter, who scrambled to rearrange my travel arrangements for me, to my husband, who went on vacation and is waiting for me to join him, to my son, who's arranged his schedule so that he can pick us back up at the airport when we come home, to two very special friends on this Board who are providing transportation to me tonight so that I can get to my hotel and get to my flight in the morning. So we don't do this work alone and sometimes we forget. And tonight, I want to make sure that I don't forget those people who helped me do the job I do. So thank you.
Well said. Very good.[1736.76][1736.76][applause] On that note, may I have a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Second.
Okay.
Aye.[1748.83][1748.83][music]